Followed order is October 13th, 2025 Winchester Public School Board Work Session. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hirschman.
Here.
Mr. Ireland.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
You.
Dr. Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Rockwell.
Yes.
Ms. Burrow. Dr. Severo.
Okay, Madam Clerk, did anybody sign up to make a public comment this evening?
No, Mr. Chen.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to address the board or maybe attend the panel today? Okay, moving forward, we'll go to Section 3 Consent Agenda, which includes the approval of the consent agenda items, the agenda, the minutes, and the bills.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Burrow.
Sorry.
And then by Ms. Harris, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is adopted. This brings us to 4A, the Gordian Facility Condition Assessment. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. So tonight I have with me Mike O'Neill from Gordian. If you recall, it was back in the winter that we signed off on getting into this facility condition assessment to help us in our strategic planning. And so Mike and his team has been to all of our schools and addressed or reviewed the conditions. And so I just want to make one point clear, you're going to see some big numbers in here, okay? You're going to see a number called backlog. And I just want to make sure the board understands that a backlog does not mean things are failing or anything. In fact, you're going to see the opposite, you're going to see our schools are very good condition. But you are going to see a big number called backlog. And that backlog number does not represent anything that is completely out of date. You know, it's basically, you have components of your buildings, your assets, that have a strategic life to them. Often, we go past that life. So you might look at carpet could be, you know, out of, past its life, but still look good. And so we continue to use the carpet that's in the room or anything else. We typically run things to failure as best we can, right? We use them as we can. And it doesn't mean our schools are unsafe or non-functional. Many of the items that are in the backlog continue to operate effectively and efficiently. And again, it's a planning tool, so that backlog number just helps us plan for what's next in our capital.
Ed, is there a list of the backlog projects that you can share with us?
There is. It is a model. Yeah, it's a modeling. It's got every component that you can think of, from HVAC to windows seals to equipment, you know, in the buildings. So, but it's certainly something we could provide a list for, but it is, like I said, a very large file. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike and ask him to go through all the stuff that they did and what they found and allow you some time to ask questions.
Great.
Yeah.
I appreciate the opportunity, thank you for having me. So as Ed said, I'm Mike O'Neill, so I'm based in Louisville, Kentucky, so I flew in today. I'm with Gordian, just very quickly, Gordian is a facility management advisory company. That's our focus is facility management. We do a number of other things, but the part I am in is facility management advisory, primarily working, most of my clients that I work with are school institutions, so a lot of universities, municipalities, school districts like yours. So that's basically what we do. We have a number of different service components that we do. And as Ed mentioned, the one that we work with you guys on is this facility condition assessment, so we'll go to the next slide. So I will tell you, there is a lot of information here. I will talk this quickly because I know you have a full agenda. Please don't hesitate to stop, you know, just shout your name, just say hey, and I'll stop and we can talk about whatever you need to. So basically, when we talk about a facility condition assessment, it's basically a two-track, I think about it as two-track. The bottom track that you see there was really the technical side of it. So as Ed mentioned back in the, probably early in the year, we sent a team out here and we walked your buildings. So there was a team that walked out, we have the data capture tool that we use, and basically just went into every building and we gathered information on the assets or the equipment that was in those buildings. What I like to say is if you take your building and turn it upside down and shake it, everything that falls out, when we put it back there, that's what we're capturing. So we're capturing a lot of building systems, your boiler, your roof, your windows. We look at your flooring, your walls, your ceilings. So we're basically gathering all of those. You're going to hear me use the term project. I don't necessarily like that word because people think project, they think a bunch of stuff together. Think of that more as an asset, like a boiler, a roof. We make group things and say, we're going to renovate the bathrooms in the building, and then maybe there's 12 bathrooms, that may be a line item, we call that one project. But basically, kind of, that's the summary of what we talked about, okay? So we gathered all that information, we then sat down and talked to Jason and Ed and the team and looked at, okay, did we get all of the assets right? We made some adjustments? And at the end of the day, the real key is we came away with the asset. How old is it? So when was it put in? Which then tells us, based on standard life cycles that we use, when is that asset due for replacement? And then we use a tool called RS Means, it's another Gordian company. Basically, RS Means is an industry-leading construction cost database. So we use RS Means to get a cost. So we look at the asset, when is it due for replacement, based on the age or the condition or both of those things? And then the cost to do it, okay? So all of that stuff goes into a database and you get this nice big number. And we'll get there in a second. So, and we'll talk about that number. The key though is, great, so I just gave you a big number. What do you do, right? How do you do that? What did Jason and Ed and the team need to do? That's where we try to bring in some tools around strategy about how do you start to break down that big number into manageable chunks? And the circle is really the key that we're looking at. How do we develop a multi-year capital investment plan that you guys can then go execute, okay? So we can go into the next slide. So the scope of what we did, we looked at almost 1 million gross square foot of space, so it was 10 buildings, so all the schools and the support buildings. And again, you can see, we looked at the exterior, so those things on the outside of a building, things interior, your walls, your furnishings. Then services, you'll hear me use that term, think about like building systems, your mechanical stuff, a lot of stuff behind the walls, down in your basements, your boilers, things of that nature. And then we did look at some, what we call site work, so like your parking lots, utility distribution, so think about things between buildings, not necessarily in a building. So that was the scope of the project. And here's the real kicker, right? The starting kicker, if you will. This is where we start talking about their big numbers. But they're not huge numbers, let me, I want to stress that. I don't think that they are huge numbers compared to some institutions that we work with, okay? But basically, what we did is we looked at all of those assets or projects that we captured, and what we do is we look at a 10-year lifespan. So we say, what's coming to in the next 10 years? All told, if you look at the database, there's almost 1,200 line items in there. 603 of those projects or assets have a due date, a replacement date, in the next 10 years. So that's what we're going to talk about. When we look at the cost for all of those items to replace all of those items, it comes out to $67 million over the next 10 years, okay? We break that down into timeframe, so you see the colored bar there on the left side, we look at four timeframes. Backlog is anything that is past due. So as Ed mentioned, don't necessarily think you have $25 million worth of stuff that's broken or unsafe today. It just means it's past its useful life. You see then timeframe A, timeframe A that orange is the next 1 to 3 years. B is the blue, that's the next 4 to 7 years, and then C is the next 8 to 10 years. Anything past 10 years, we call that timeframe X, you don't see that here, but it is in the database as you mentioned, okay? So every project, like I said, falls into one of those buckets. You can see the little picture up there on the left, that's the percentage within each of the timeframes, how it breaks out. I will tell you, when we look across all of our database, all the institutions, the school districts, the municipalities that we work with, you are pretty representative of everybody else. You are not an outlier by any stretch. Those are pretty comparable, how much is in backlog, how much is in A, B, and C timeframe, okay? So you're not, you're not in bad shape, is what I will tell you, okay? You have need, there is. On the right side, you see where we break things out by system. So this is where you see 61% of that $67 million, so about 41 million, is sitting in what we call services. So again, think of services as electrical items, mechanical items, you know, HVAC, your plumbing needs. General conditions is the next one there, that's kind of a catch-all. I would tell you, a lot of that catch-all is in quarrels, Garland Quarles. We kind of had a couple projects that we call, where we just kind of captured some larger needs, some really needing to renovate a portion of the building, and so we didn't break that up by system. And then also, the need to really expand that from talking to the team, we threw a line item in there to do that. Interiors, again, is like your carpet, your floors, your ceilings, that's what interior does. Shell is, again, exterior items, so your roof, your outside, like brickwork, siding, windows, things like that. And then equipment and furnishings, most of that is really capturing your kitchen equipment, so like in your cafeterias. And then site work is your parking lots and any infrastructure. Again, pretty comparable to our database, most of the time, you're going to see the majority of needs are sitting in your mechanical spaces. Go to the next slide. So the next slide just starts to show, on the first there on the left, is your total building need. So basically, it's saying every asset or project is tied to a building, and we'll just sum it up the total, right? In that 10-year window by timeframe. As you can see, Daniel Morgan, John Hanley, your two biggest buildings, they're going to have the majority of your need, that goes without saying. The right-hand side is where we start to try to normalize the data and think about things on a dollar per gross square foot basis. So this is where you can start to really compare buildings and building conditions, this is one way to look at it. We'll show you another way here in a bit. But as you would probably expect, Garland Quarles shows us as your building in most need of work, okay?
Real quick, the Virginia Avenue is at primarily HVAC and lighting, which we already talked about.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, I think so, yeah. The other way that we look at a building's condition is what we call net asset value. The simplest, from my brain, is it's the percent good of a building. So what we do is we have a little formula, you can see there, kind of the middle on the right. We look at what we call replacement value for a building. The replacement value is not what it would cost to tear down and rebuild that building, okay? So don't think about it that way. We look at it as an average cost per gross square foot to replace the building in time. So same kind of construction, same kind of systems, you're not going to put a 1950s boiler in there, but you're putting a similar type of boiler in today's dollars. And so it's just a value that we put on a building, we have average dollar per gross square foot figures that we use, and apply that, so we get a replacement value. Then we identify the amount of need that's in that building. So you can imagine, if you take the replacement value and you look at the amount of need and use that little math formula there, I'm talking, never do math in public, but you do that formula and you see, you get a percent good. So as Ed mentioned, you have a lot of spaces up there in the green, what we call capital upkeep. These are buildings you really just are, you're on top of them, right? They're in really good shape, you're just really watching them, you're adjusting things as they come up. As you start to go down that scale on the right and the little dots get lower and into those other colors, you start to see where buildings need more work. And you really start to get into that, especially as you get into that lower yellow, start of that orange range, that's where we say projects start to pick you. You might have the best laid plans, but you're chasing projects because things are just breaking on you. When you get down into the red, that's when you really need to start thinking about time to either get, renovate this building, renovate the building, or maybe time to tear it down and replace. As you see, Garland Quarles kind of falls down into that.
You have a question.
Yes, I'm sure.
Quick RS Means question. When they did the evaluation, like if we have, let's say, I'll use a car example, in a Cadillac, right? And they say, well, Kia does just as good, is that the RS Means value on the Cadillac value or the RS Means value on the Kia value?
What RS Means does is it goes out and it looks like that particular system. So it's what we call Level 5, so you start to break down like, like a specific type of boiler. So it's a 200 gas-fired boiler. And what RS Means does is they go out and they look at pricing nationally, and they come up with the national average for a gas boiler. But then they also bring in regional planning factors that says, to buy a gas boiler, the same type of boiler that you would put in there in Winchester, may not be Winchester, but it'll be the biggest locale around Winchester, it costs X amount of dollars to replace that, right?
But it's not a one-to-one. It's an average.
It's basically an average.
Yeah, it can't be a one-to-one because some places will have boilers that no longer made.
Right.
I do RS Means.
Oh, yeah?
So that's kind of where I'm getting at, is I've seen that map before where it's like, oh, you had a marble countertop, and now we're going to give you a microtop, right? It's still a countertop.
Now, when we put the item in, though, FF Level 5 description, so you start to break down an asset into, it's a HVAC item, so it's what we call D. Then it's, excuse me, D equals, it's a service item. Then D30 is HVAC. D, that's Level 2. Then D30 something, something is Level 3. That means that it's a heating generation versus cooling generation. Level 4 takes it down to the next level, it says it's heating distribution, and then it gets down to that Level 5. So in your example, we would be capturing that it is marble, not micro.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then it is definitely an average for those lookouts.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, it's, when we talk about RS Means in the pricing here, that's where I stress, this is like, if we looked at all of the items for Garland Quarles as an example, and you added all of those up, that would not be what you would expect a contractor to come in and go, that's our bid price. That is just a planning, this is really planning information.
Gotcha.
I'm an old Air Force guy, so I will tell you, this is kind of an 8,000-level view, not a 10-foot view.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good morning, poor guys. Good question. Anything else on that? So basically, again, this is just another way to look at and put some measure to how are your buildings looking? And again, I think you guys, and you all know and should be very proud, you have a very well-maintained, very strong portfolio of buildings. You're starting to, some need is starting to.
I would say this chart, I mean, if everybody thinks about it, right? It reflects really how our assets are, I mean, we're at the top with Shahada, Douglas School, right? John Fur, those are all three of our buildings. It really kind of tells the story of where we're at, some of these schools are a little older, Hanley was renovated in the last, you know, 15, 18 years, and so you can see it kind of getting, starting to fall out of that capital upkeep stage. And then Quarles, I think, part of that was, we talked earlier about, you've got some asbestos, you know, it's encapsulated, that needs to be part of that renovation, so that drops up the cost a little bit, so it forces that grade down a little bit.
So again, we go back to, it's great you have the system-level data, we rolled up, can show you a bunch of different ways, we obviously condensed it here, but lots of different ways we could break it down, we could show you all the backlog, we could show you this, we could show you that. What do you do, right? What do these guys do with that information? And really, that's where we start to try to bring in some strategic approaches to being able to break down that need into how to think about it. So no one way fits this, so we kind of talking to the team and collaboratively, we brought some approaches that we use in other places, and that's what we're going to show here. So one of the things that we looked at was basically trying to group buildings into different portfolios. Lots of different ways to do this. I think when we looked at across your group of 10 buildings, you know, a high school is more important than a middle school is more important than elementary school, or even a support building, right? So when we thought about portfolios, how we looked at breaking those up into kind of distinct chunks was we looked at by age. So we had three age categories that we looked at, anything under 10, 10 to 25, 25 to 50, and you have no buildings over 50, but it could be another way to think about it.
We don't have a building for 50 years, 50 years since it's been in there.
Yes, sorry. Yes, we're renovating, thank you.
Yeah, we do have a high school that's under 50.
Yes, yes, so, but if a building has been renovated, then that's the year that we think about that building. The other way, another way that we think about stuff is project scoring. So again, we have these 603, really 1,100, but we'll just talk about the 600 that are in the 10-year. And again, how do you rack and stack one over another, right? Just because something is in backlog, as Ed mentioned, doesn't mean that's the next thing that you should go do. If it's operating just fine, let it go, right? So what we did is we looked at, trying to use multi-criteria approach to give everything a score. So we looked at four factors across, for each project. So we looked at the timeframe that that project was due for replacement, the NAV, the net asset value of the building that it was in, the age of the building that it was in, and then the type of project that it was. So we have some criteria, or some categories that we put in. So reliability is something that is in danger of imminent failure and will shut your building down. So like the mechanical system that's going to shut your building down if it fails. We look at safety items. So safety is, we may, a project may be related to safety. Asset preservation is just, it just makes the building run, like carpet, right? That's asset preservation. So each project got a score on those four criteria. And basically, again, simple math, multiply those scores, each score together, you get a total project score, we're able to rack and stack and draw a line and go, high priority projects, medium priority, low priority, we'll show that in a bit. And then the last piece was thinking about funding scenarios. So we have all of this need, if we continue to get a million dollars a year for the next 10 years, we have $10 million over 10 years, what can we address? We got $2 million a year, what could we address? If it was great, we got $4 million a year, what could we address? So thinking about funding scenarios and what we're able to address with that. So that was the strategic approach that we took, and what does that look like? So one thing that we came and brought to the table was this notion of grouping buildings into this quad view. So a lot to think about here, but again, I'll simplify it for me, and then you guys will all understand it. Bottom axis there is just looking at total need for a building. So we're going to drop on the next slide, you'll see where your building sits on this plot, total need on the x-axis there. So basically, it's just saying, in that 10 years, what are all of the projects come due? How much does it cost? Left side, we look at all of the projects for that building in the 10 years, what were their scores? We add up all of the scores for that, low to high on both of those axes. And what you start to find is, and there's no magic to where we draw the lines, I mean, we can move the lines as needed, we'll show you kind of where we put them, but basically, what we said is, you then naturally have these four quadrants. If you think about buildings on your lower left there in your monitor category, these are buildings that have lower need, lower severity in terms of all of the projects, the scores that are there, these are really just, you're just kind of keeping an eye, you're just addressing projects as they come up, and you're really using your operating budget to take care of those. To the top left, now you start to get, not over, you know, not high need, but you start to get high severity in terms of your projects. This is where you want to start thinking about, you're going to be replacing some items. Bottom left, you're more break, fix, day-to-day. Top left, you're going to start saying, you know what, we need to replace a roof, we need to replace a water heater, we need to replace systems. This is where you're going to start trying to capitally budget for those items. We get to the lower right, this is where, again, you start to have higher need, maybe not as severe in terms of ranking, but this is where you start to think about, you know what, we have some targeted remodels or target, maybe we need to address a floor in the building, not the whole building, but a floor, and we might gather up a bunch of projects together. So here is where we start thinking about, you know what, we're going to target a floor, and we may need to go out and get special funding to address that project. It's not part of our normal annual capital budget, we need a special thing to do that. Upper right, we got a lot of need and it's really severe, we probably need to go out and renovate that building as a whole, and we probably need to go, maybe it's a bond. In the university world, we may say, you want to go find a nice donor that's got pockets? But basically, you're looking at a specific big project number that you want to go find. So that's kind of the quadrant view, and as you see on the next slide, when we start putting the data there, this is kind of how it starts to lay out. Again, it's not a perfect, there's not exactly how it would be, but it starts to give you that picture that shows, again, kind of where things fall. And now we're talking about Frederick Douglass, I think is a great example. Frederick Douglass in Virginia, he was telling me, very similar buildings, right? Similar age, kind of a lot of similar needs originally, but there was a lot of focused investment on specific projects, replacing specific systems, that the team put money there. Because we were able to address those specific replacement needs, it kind of pulled it out of that maintain category and it put it in that monitor category. So a good example of how targeting certain things can move stuff around. As we mentioned, just based on the amount of need and the severity, a lot of it is due to the timeframe that the need is in. You see Quarles kind of sitting there in that, we probably need to go renovate that building. So that's, I'm sorry. Yeah, I saw a preach in the choir.
I would say that also, I just want to make a point, that Daniel Morgan and Hanley being in that remodel type section, I get it, that Hanley was remodeled, what, 18 years ago? They are also the bigger campuses, so they have, you're talking about that 10-year need on the bottom axis, that's why they're kind of over there is because they are so big that they drop up the cost that's going to entail your needs. So that's really why they're over there more so than in the mind, or even back towards here, but they're just enormous schools.
So the last piece that we'll look at is just thinking about, again, what, with the data, what does funding look like, right? What do we think we'd be able to address? So the first slide that we will look at, when we think about funding is, if we racked and stacked all of those projects and said, what was high-impact projects, moderate-impact, and low-impact? Again, we just racked and stacked all of those scores for the 603, and we just, we drew lines and said, anything that was over 420 score was, we called that high-impact. Anything that was below 106, from 0 to 106, we called that low, everything else was in the middle. Again, no particular science to that, it just, that's kind of what felt right based on, you know, bell curves and distributions. But if we did that and drew those lines, you can see high-impact, we have $15 million worth of high-impact projects over the next 10 years. We have 36, almost 37, moderate, 15 and 1/2 in low. So again, if we continue with our, what has, I'm told traditionally been about a million dollars a year of budget, you can see over 10 years, we'd have 10 million to spend, we would not be able to meet all of our high-priority projects. We would be able to fund about 66% of that high-impact. If we were able to get $2 million a year, you see, we could address all of the high-impact, and we'd be able to start chipping away at those moderate-impact projects. So, sorry, let me get back to my notes here. So, sorry, let me get back to my notes here. It was about 13% of of the moderate. And then you see again, if we were able to get $40 million. So that, that's what that chart there on the left is. So again, it's just breaking that $67 million we talked about into those three buckets. What we did on the right there was we said, if we were able to fund Garland Quarles through some other funding mechanism and renovate that building, basically what we're saying is we probably take out all of that 10 year need in that project. So if we did that and and not ignored it, but addressed it a different way, I didn't do that.
I didn't either.
If we addressed it a different way, our total need comes down from 67 to just a, just under 50 million. So that, again, about 17.3 million dollars is what's captured in Garland Quarles. So if we separated that and just said, okay, well now we really have $50 million we need to address each, you know, this 10 year period. You see, now if we kept our million dollars a year, we could address all of our high impact projects. We could hit almost half of our moderate. If we, I'm sorry, if we were at $2 million, we'd hit all of our high impact and half of our moderate. So you start to see what the team was able to do as you start to think about modeling now different funding scenarios in terms of your project needs.
Right, and that could be a bond, right?
Good.
Good. I mean, it could be a bond for quarrels. That's where you get to go to the second chart, but then you could also issue a bond for
Well, I understand, yeah.
Another 20 million and then and address all those other projects.
And I think it's also important to note that if you did, you know, if you did get a bond or you had some, you know, amount of money that was set aside outside of the million dollars that we're normally using to address need. You know, again, it doesn't mean that you go and have to address all of your high impact, right? You may target, say, we're going to renovate two floors of the building. Well, you're going to start chipping away at probably projects in all of those categories, right? Once you start ripping out walls, you're going to replace carpet too. Carpet might not be high impact, but you're already in there, go do it, right?
Just look at down the road if you had a bond, I'm asking you this question, I was saying, down the road if you had a bond, then that frees up money down the road for other things.
Other things. And a good, good point to remember that when we talk, when we're talking about quarrels, we did a lot of conversation on quarrels that we treat. But we, we have to remember that in that conversation and in that bond discussion is also Virginia happening, which is another big project. I mean, we're talking eight to 10 million for new HVAC, new lighting, et cetera. So, you know, in our early conversations with city council, you know, that, that's a package bond that we have working on. So that will, that will work. If we pass that and and take care of those two big projects, we would be able to, to your point, like, use carry forward to take care of a lot of things.
I got a question. So looking at the, that ground one or the chart on the right of quarrels, the fact that we get $10 million over 10 years is great because that takes out the high impact costs. But then, I mean, if most of quarrel renovations are going to be between backlog and an A timeframe of one to three years, how do we judge that this, you know, that $6 million that's not going to be made in three years?
I'm, I'm not following, Skip, can you, can you, I'm not following your question.
Like if we look at the chart and we say that if we push more money to quarrels and if we're pulling a million dollars a year and after, you know, this is a 10 year plan, that's great because we know we've covered this $6 million of high impact cost. But then if we look at the building need chart, which was a couple of slides before, and quarrels, it's mainly between backlog costs, which kind of we discussed is kind of its own thing. But then the next thing is a really big chunk of an A timeframe.
Right.
And so that stuff that we have to get in one to three years, how we like, how do we judge that? And how do we put forth the money? Because we'd only have $3 million.
I think you're missing out that this, that chart takes into account that we went out and got a bond and we replaced quarrels. Quarles is now not part of that calculation. Okay, that, you're, you're including it in the revenue.
Yeah. But similar, similar point, I think the other key piece to to think about is that timeframe is a component here, but it's not the only component. Because when we say it's a high impact project, you may have a project that is in backlog, but that doesn't equal that it's necessarily in high impact. Because it may be in backlog, but it's in a very new building. It's a building that's in very good condition and it's, it's a, what we call asset, so it could be your carpet, right? So it's in backlog, but it, I, I don't want to be flippant, but if it fails, okay, that's not a safety issue, right? So, so the high impact doesn't necessarily just mean backlog. But to your point, I think that's why it's important when we think about, this is really all around project scoring and that multi criteria, trying to put multi criteria to projects and then rack and stack them. What can you start to address with particular funding?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Good question.
And then we'll round out in a little bit, sorry. So the, the last thing that we looked at here is just thinking about over the next 10 years. So we have a backlog number that we are starting with. So again, remember backlog doesn't equal unsafe. Backlog just means that we have projects that are past their useful life, right? They can still be okay, but they're, they're the projects that are past their useful life. So on the top there, what we're saying is right now, our backlog, as we talked about at the very beginning, is about $25 million over the next 10 years. So we'll think about that 10 year window. The coming need over the next 10 years is what's broken out there on the left. So in 2025, all of the projects that have replacement timeframes defined as 2025, based on the lifecycle of that asset, i.e. when it needs to be replaced, either based on age and or condition. So remember, we looked at age first, but then talked to the team and said, okay, based on age, sounds like that that asset should be replaced in 2025. Using their expertise, we may, they may have said, no, that, that item can go another three years. So we put a new timeframe on it. So again, using the expertise as well as the age. So bottom line, that chart on the left is showing you each year, what does your need look like? Because it's not consistent year over year, obviously. And so what we did is we laid in the, a little bit hard to see, I know it's my chart, sorry. But the black line is if we funded at a million dollars a year, how much of the need each year could we address? The purple line is 2 million, the green line is 4 million. And what you see is on the top there, if we had a million, if we continue to get a million dollars a year, there's only two years in the next 10 that we meet all of our need, 2025 and 2033. So in those years, we're able to meet all of the need, plus we can start chipping away at backlog. Every other year, so there's two other years, 26 and 30, where we just miss it, but we're about right there. Every other year, like 2027, we're not able to address all of the need that is coming due, which means we do some things, but we're adding to backlog. Okay, things are going past their lifecycle, not unsafe, just past their lifecycle. So on the chart on the right, what we're saying is if we're funded at a million dollars a year, what happens to our backlog number? At a million dollars a year, after 10 years, we, we basically double our backlog. Our backlog would now be sitting at about 52 and a half million dollars a year. And you can see what it is across all three scenarios. So basically, across all three scenarios, backlog grows over 10, over the 10 year period. What happens if we take out quarrels again? Just modeling that out, you can see the need significantly shrinks in several years, especially in that timeframe A, those first three red bars. Because again, a lot of that timeframe A, Skip, as you mentioned, that's quarrels, right? That's the expansion, that's the specialist work and that's some renovation that we laid in. The out years, you see, generally don't get impacted by quarrels coming out. But in this case, what we see is, you can see that more years at a million dollars, we're able to address or or almost address the need, 2 million even more, 4 million. Basically, every year we're good except for those two big ones, 29 and 34. So what happens to backlog? Backlog starts at 16 million when we take out quarrels, because it's got a lot of backlog. And then you can see scenario one and two, backlog still grows. Scenario three, actually backlog shrinks by 40%.
That's 4 million a year.
But that's at 4 million a year.
Yeah.
I did not prepare my checkbook, so. So anyway, just kind of again, another view that the team is able to start looking at and thinking about, how do things play out? And this is just assuming straight funding over particular, a million bucks a year. But this now gives the team maybe an opportunity to go, hey, a million dollars is great this year. In 2027, could we maybe get two? I doubt they're gonna, you may try just, they're not going to get eight, but you could try. But you can start to see when do things ramp up and when do they ramp down.
Yeah, and those of you who've been on the board, like, the way we, our rhythm has been, you know, we, we have our carry forward, which is between 1 and 2 million a year. We were usually, you know, right, right between 1 and 1 and a half million for it. But then we, we come in with a big bond every five years or so and tackle bigger projects. So that's been our rhythm. And so this is really helpful once we kind of consider how we've done business in the past versus where we are moving forward.
Yeah, and we, there's a trend coming in 2020 and now.
That's right, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So when we start having these conversations with council, I think it's very important to explain to them.
And I think what, what's great now, you know, working with the team, is they can define what that train looks like.
Right.
They're not just saying it's a train, they can, they can put some description to what does the train entail? You know, it's HVAC in this particular building and it's carpet in that particular building and it's plumbing in this particular building. And, and decisions can be made that says, you know what? We're okay with the carpet as it is, or maybe we're not. So, but I think that's the key is now having the data at the system level or the asset level to be able to, to tell the story in more colorful terms.
And just, so the board knows behind the scenes, we have access to this database with logins and Ed and his team telling me, you know, so as we do things, we'll be updating this in real time, which has been very helpful.
Thanks for still with us.
Oh, my bad.
I did want to end here that yes, the facilities team has the ability to access and maintain the data. It's on what we call the Boarding Cloud Platform, so it's, it's an online database. And basically, it enables the team to keep the data current and see the impact of changes. So again, all of those 1,200 assets are in there. As things, as work is done, the team can go in, I think Tony's going to own that and get trained on. He can go in and say, that boiler in that building was last done in 2024 or 2025. That resets the age, so now when the system pulls the data, it says that boiler is now due in 30 years from now, not due now. So they're able to maintain that each year. The RS means, the RS means data is, is refreshed and basically updates the costing to the new costing model that's in there, so it accounts for inflation as well as any price changes that RS means brings in. They can go in there and they can model out, you know, what if we think that a project score, the safety component shouldn't be a five, it should be a seven. They can change it to a seven and see what does that do to the numbers. So a lot of capability to be able to, to go in there, see dashboards. The bottom left is just an example of the dashboard. And these are just some images from there. But basically, it's an online tool that they're able to go in there and, and make updates and really own as they're doing work to keep the data up to date. Or if we find there's new assets that they want to put in there, we didn't capture, but they want to put it in there, they can put it up. It's, it's your data, it's not our data, it's your data.
And so our next steps, our next steps locally is to take this data and try to incorporate it into the capital improvement that we're going to bring to you guys in late November. And so we'll be working on this over the next month or so, trying to get this data incorporated into that so that we can, we can look at our capital improvement plan and it'll kind of match up to what we see here.
And then the last slide really is just, is just a, a rehash of what I already said. So I don't want to go through it because, I mean, I know you have these slides and it basically says the same thing. So I know we went over, I apologize for that, I get to go, but. Any questions I can address now or?
Questions or comments?
And I know it's a lot, so if you have opportunity, you go through later and you do have them, please share them with the team. We're, we're happy to continue to help and, and, you know, provide them information or show them as, as we, you know, get Tony trained up on the system. But if anybody has anything, you know, the next time period as you're thinking about it, just share it with them, happy to, happy to help.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All right, you all stay safe.
Now we're going to invite Dr. Joyner to be with us.
I think we've lost him. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, good morning. Let's see, let's pull this up. We're still going to have to use this. No pressure, all right? Well, pleased to bring you the staffing report tonight quickly out here. As you're aware, the employment market continues to be quite challenging for us, both licensed and support staff. And we're quite pleased with the results I'm going to share with you tonight. Due to the tireless efforts of our staff and willingness to innovate and think outside the box, I told you last year, and it's true again this year, that we're going to have to continue to provide extraordinary effort and depth by resources to meet the challenges for the foreseeable future. So this report, Code of Virginia Standards of Quality, is presented immediately to the board. It includes information that this board has requested and previous boards. It gives us insights into composition of student body workforce, analyzing changes in enrollment, staffing levels, demographics over time. And it meets our requirements, your requirements for reporting the actual pupil teacher ratios by school at all levels. And then we also take a look at our goals that's outlined in, I'll wait, 2030, our strategic plan. The standards are probably set for guidelines for us for assigning licensed personnel in a manner that gives us schoolwide or division wide ratios of students and average daily membership to full time of coral teaching positions. And that excludes special ed, principals, assistant principals, counselors, librarians. In addition, as you can see here, K6 have individual class size limits. And we're required to report out elementary, middle and high each year. We're required to report out the ratios without all those resource teachers. And in interested, we, they tell us we're going to report the resource teachers as well, so we get that. Here are elementary levels, the first column, which does not include resource teachers. Got a range of 17 to 18 to 1 with an average of 16.6. And elementary school resource teachers include, they're not necessarily limited to PESD, technology. Administrators and school counselors and librarians are excluded. On the right, you see it with resource teachers from 12 to 14 to 1 with an average of 13.9. And it's well below the limits of 24 to 1 in grades K3 and 25 to 1 in grades 4 and 5. Intermediate, middle school, we have to assign in a manner that gives us 21 to 1 in middle schools and high schools and division wide of 24 to 1 for English. Now recall, English with English language classes. In addition, you have course offerings with opportunities such as In addition, you have course offerings with opportunities such as Stewart Cattell's literature, public speaking, creative writing, journalism, uh, poetry, philosophy, the whole cornucopia of things. And these ratios include all of those offerings. And there's some variability by school based on interest and program of studies. But you see here, our average is fourteen to fifteen to one, division average of fifteen, and we're right at, uh, and that's below twenty one is the understanding on the right, we're at twenty one to one, and that's below the S and Q guidance of twenty four to one. And then high school, see here, our ratios are seventeen, they are seventeen point six to one, division is the same, of course, that's below twenty one to one by S and Q guidance. And then on the right, when you do it by class, it's eighteen point three to one, and that's below the, uh, standard of twenty four to one. Trying to make music as exciting as possible. And then you see here a slide that shows where we're over and we have the report we're over and we exceed that limit. So there we've met our requirements for your people to, to teacher ratios.
As you, before you go to the next part. So when people ask, where's the money? That's where all the money is going. This is low class size, Winchester Public Schools has historically had low class size. It's a wonderful gift that we give our kids, families and our teachers. Um, so in any other locations, you're working with twenty five, thirty kids in a classroom. Most high school classrooms are pushing thirty kids in a classroom. And I'm, I'd be hard pressed to say Julian Skip have had many classes with thirty kids in it, right? So, you know, when people look at the budget, this is where we spend our money is in the classroom, and that's something we should all be very proud of.
And yet you, there's a constant pushback towards the people who will see this and say, you're, you're at seventeen and the SOQ is at smack twenty one. So why can't we get closer to twenty one and save WPS some money? So just something to keep in mind.
That's right.
Yeah. What's, what matters to us is saving some, some dollars, which is always a good thing, or, um, continuing.
Educating children.
Educating children in the way that we know is best practice.
And it's a credit to this board perennially not to be forced into that conversation, but...
And it affects not just quality of education, but climate, right? And, and how people feel, um, and the teacher experience or the work experience. I mean, I, when I started teaching, I s, I kid you not, I had thirty seven kids in an algebra one class.
Oh, my gosh.
That's hard. I'll tell you flat out, it's hard to teach thirty seven kids in an algebra one class. So, um, you know, that's, that's not our experience here, and we should be grateful for that.
So on to staffing. Uh, from twenty nineteen to twenty fif, twenty twenty five, national trends, we've got sustained challenges in recruiting and retaining qualified people. We talk about that every year, teacher prep programs. Um, the enrollments have declined, number of candidates completing licensure requirements remains insufficient to meet the demand. As you can see here in the state of Virginia, the startup this year, a little bit of positive news, three point four percent improved, uh, slightly. That's compared to four point seven in July of twenty twenty four. However, every, you know, Virginia, uh, states critical shortage areas each year, ten critical shortage. For this year, they are SPED, elementary ed, middle ed, English secondary, mathematics, science secondary, history and social science secondary, CTE, health and P E, world languages, in other words, just about everything we hired for is critical shortage. So, so put a fine point on it, this is probably the most important slide, here you see the civil times, this evening, the market for highly qualified teaching candidates remains brutal. That's what this slide tells you. Nationally, over four hundred eleven thousand five hundred teaching positions were reported either as unfilled or filled by uncertified personnel in twenty twenty five. Compare that to two hundred thousand in twenty twenty. So attrition remains significant. The Rand Corporation identifies primary drivers such as challenging student behavior, low salaries, excessive non-instructional work life. The National Center for Education Statistics Twitter supports that same dissatisfaction of administrative support, compensation and workload is among the top reasons for folks exiting the profession. That's nationally, not locally, but we feel those pressures. Research also show, tells us that the key factors that contribute to retention, teachers are more likely to remain if they experience supportive leadership, manageable class sizes, structured induction and mentoring, and predictable compensation. You can see where we stack up Virginia nationally, but I said predictable, we assume competitive. But predictable is just as important based on the research and the numbers. And this board has supported perennially predictable. It's been, it's been a discussion, so, uh, congratulations on that because competitive, yes, always, but if you compare that with predictable, we're gonna get better results with your thoughts. The national attrition rates here, and you can see with COVID and the up in spite, but it's back down, those are the actual rates. Uh, the Rand Corporation, they also measure intent to leave. So a little bit more of good news this year, we're down to sixteen percent on intent to leave with twenty two percent in previous years. So the actual rates were down seven, down to six and a quarter. The intent to leave is down slightly, so a little glimmer of hope, uh, not enough to relax, but just a little bit of pressure. I shared this with you last year, we talked about, these are the top ten reasons experienced teachers move to a new division and stay in that division. Because of the environment we're in, you're gonna see these things infused, as you saw last Wednesday, on our Elevate Twenty Thirty Plan. Uh, it's focused and targeted specifically to these indicators, uh, as to why people come and stay. And as we've discussed, you know, these reasons are complex, they're interwoven, but as you look closer at our key performance indicators in twenty thirty, that's what you're gonna see, not only our objectives, but our strategies and the projects that are gonna come. We've got to target these areas to get people to come and stay.
Minor, uh, sophisticated point here, Doug. You've got eleven circles there and not ten, but there are also two of them that are redundant, so you're actually only listing nine.
It, it, it doubled in a different way, so thank you very much. So I should say the top eleven reasons.
Well, no, two of them that are redundant.
Well, and I mentioned, and I might you put that because I'll mention it later, better work-life balance is on top. And the ten are actually the ones with the line, and the better work-life balance goes to gold to the Elevate staff, we'll talk about that later, so good catch. Here's one, here's one, well, let me hit this again here. Our numbers for the past season, uh, the market remains brutal, but all indicators point to the fact that we've had a successful season. Um, any measure certainly within our region and state, but we're gonna have to stay vigilant and we're going to have to be proactive in what we do, keep the systems in place that we have. And I'm gonna point that out several places as we go through, go through the numbers here tonight. This chart you're familiar with, you see it twice a month, from March to June, our highest, uh, regular personnel reports, it's our highest season. For last year, there were four hundred twenty one licensed staff on the TTT scheme, teacher salary. And as we go throughout, sometimes we'll just have teachers and sometimes we'll look at everybody and back and forth. Uh, four hundred twenty one licensed, we had thirty eight leave in the school division, we had zero retired, that's the only year in the past year, past ten where that's happened. But that has to do with age of our, our staff, and as it shifts to younger, you'll see a line remote that pulls that out. Two administrators retired, that represents a turnover rate of nine point oh three percent. That's a celebration, the year before was thirteen point five one, so we've talked about that together often. For support staff, we had eighty nine leave, nine retired, five were terminated, seventy five resigned. So that, without the retired reason, that's a twenty three point eight percent. With them, it's twenty eight percent. Last year, it was twenty eight and thirty point two percent. We've had this twenty five percent each of the five, past five years with support staff, which is why you're gonna see a focus on that in Elevate Twenty Thirty. This gives you a little bit thinner information about that turnover, uh, with support staff. Historically, the highest rates here are with, um, TAs, cafeteria workers and custodians. TAs account for a third of all support staff. Uh, but some of the reasons, that's why it was the highest. Last year, we got a hundred eighteen, this year, we have ninety eight. That's due to not only several federal grants ending, but budget allocation adjustments where principals have more leeway to modify staff, staff and number of attrition. So that's why that number is higher. Support staff have more and more varied classifications of employees than our, than our licensed staff. So full-time versus part-time, highly competitive hourly wage market. You know, if you're only working three, four, four and a half hours a day for ten months, it's difficult to compete and compare with an eight-hour, twelve-month position and finding experienced, much less qualified staff for those positions is exceedingly different, difficult. As I told you last Wednesday, some good, a little bit of good news on this, this front. Our cafeteria and custodians were our lowest pace deals, of course, as you know, we've raised those significantly. And in the first quarter of this year, we've had no custodian resignations, um, which that's good news, we'll try to do that through the rest of the year. This chart, I highly am going detailed when I, I show it because some of you have been on the board a while, seen it over three years, and it just gives you an idea of the type of data that we, we track and continue to collect. You'll see it in these other slides, maybe that can give you a better idea of what those numbers mean. This is resignations and retirements over the past ten years. The reddish, orange, the bottom is res, uh, retirements. The top one, uh, yellowish is resignations. Many factors can impact these numbers over time, availability, competitive salaries, notice in sixteen, seventeen, uh, that's the last year Loudon gave full credit for all experience. They cut that out, I mean, just recently reinstated that, it'll be easy to see, but I, I think I mentioned we had a question in the closed session. Uh, we're, we're about at a net zero with Loudon. Those leaving and those coming back, pretty much zero out are fair, fairly even, and that's been the case for the last four, five years. Uh, we continue to see, we continue to harp on lack of qualified candidates, double-digit turnover rates, competitive market, uh, although we've done better with that in the past couple of years. This slide shows you resignations by experience. Not unexpectedly, the highest is in the zero to five years nationwide, and you've heard this before, fifty percent of all teachers leave the profession in their first five years. So last year, this chart was a little more of a U shape, more even outslanted to the left. So we're, we're mirroring the national average in resignations by experience. This shows you a breakdown of those resignations by reason. We keep the same fourteen on here because these fourteen accompanies just about everything we see each year. The blue shows you, uh, for teaching reasons, wanting to take on a teaching job, the red or brown shows you other, other reasons there. And you see we have some zeros in some of those categories this year. Uh, and these results are really very consistent with past year. This chart hasn't changed much year, year to the year, except sixteen, seventeen with Loudon hit a peak here. Uh, many challenges, as I mentioned earlier, this is by staff across the range of years of experience. And I talked to you a long ago, I think hiring profile is more than the ups and downs of those numbers on the roller coasters. Am I attractive? What's the quality and how, how's that quality translated into meeting our goals? And that's why I show it to you this, this way. But again, colleges and universities and programs going away, people leaving the profession across the nation, still very high. And it, with that increased competition, we have this around budget time every year, but we've got to stay competitive and we always, we have to keep doing the things we're doing. So it's competition, but it's also quality in professional life. And let me talk about that, talk about that for a minute, but quality of professional life will cause people to move. So it's competitive market, it's also generational. And we could probably do a whole other report on generational impact on employees and hiring and recruiting. But what I mean by that, you're hearing from a boomer tonight. So, you know, work is life, life is work, who I am is type, my work, generational, and a, and a consideration here. You'll notice in, in Stewart White about twenty thirty in Elevate, we had quality or, or work-life balance. So when you say work-life balance to a boomer, we say, what's that? And you say work-life balance to a new hire, they say, that's a good read. So as you look at that, that shift to the lead, you know, that zero to five, the first two bars, so generationally, how do you, how do you keep the train on the tracks? How do you attract and retain? But the generational question is becoming larger for us. For years, we were pretty stable and we were skewed a little bit to the right, our third to third to third in all those experience levels, but now we're shifting back this way. And the question of how do you attract, you know, boomers, opportunity to serve, and that sort of thing. Uh, new hires are, I wanna work-life balance, and we better align with my values, or I'm not gonna come work with you, or I'm not gonna stay here. And we're seeing the impact of that.
Yeah, a practical example of that is trying to find people to do summer school or after school duties, or we pay them, but they, they just say thanks but no thanks, you know? And it's like, uh, it's not my generation either, it's like, oh yeah, we're looking for that extra hustle, um, or we're doing it out of duty, like, of course I'll be there to teach summer school, I'm doing it. But, uh, the new generation, it is about work-life balance, and they say, no, I did my time, thank you very much, I'm gonna take my summer off and enjoy my life. And that's, that's not a bad thing, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just a reality. Summer school recruitment has been a real challenge over the last five years.
But it changes almost everything you do for other people. Last year, this chart flipped, the sixteen plus was here and the, and the zero was here, and now it's the exact opposite. So because of that, last year, the average experience level of our new hires was twelve years. This year, it's eight. That's not bad, that's still very healthy. I've used the church analogy before, you know, you want a very healthy organization, you want it across all, not just in, in one, and we very much mirror, mirror that, and that's, that's a good, a good thing. Part of the drive of that average is our, was our CTE. And I call them our Avengers, you know, the people who've had a full career, and then they come and they teach for us. So that pushed up our experience rate as well, you know, if you had twenty five, thirty years and more of your hires, and then if you have less people leaving, so all of that plays in, plays into these numbers. Uh, this takes all of those, these experience range and groups, puts them into groups. And again, you can see a, a pretty healthy U here and hire profile. So again, we're at eight years is our average hire. The new cohort this year coming to us had sixty percent of them held advanced degrees. So what that means is the majority of our new hires are experienced professionals deciding to join Winchester. If you look at our population, oh, take all of our teacher, all four twenty one last year before eighteen this year, it's fifty three percent have advanced degrees. So that, that's pretty helpful and a good thing for us. Uh, this slide here, you know, we've looked at minority hiring and demographic data, you know, from empowered twenty twenty five. Um, equitable empowered school climate strategy was to recruit and retain culturally diverse workforce that represents our student body. We remain committed to that goal, uh, high standards and diversity recruitment, hiring retention. What you see here, what, uh, for the last six years, we're extremely pleased to have had this result over that time in a challenging employment market. But what you notice immediately this year is this year, uh, our cohort is lower by about a third. And there's several contributing factors to that. This was our smallest cohort in years, which means our turnover wasn't that high. Also, the number of qualified candidates was lower than the number of qualified minority candidates. We'll take a look now at the last few slides, how does that impact us overall, the whole mix and still maintaining and wanting, wanting to, to meet this? So here's our demographic data for our staff male. And we're gonna look at this a couple of different ways, but it, it has been, past three years remained essentially the same in these, and I'm gonna show you that in a minute. We go back ten years, we look at the high watermark for point was ninety two in twenty six, seventeen, twenty eight. So compared them to now, you can see what the blue lines is where we are now, the red is where we are in seventeen, eighteen. Zoom in a little bit, we can see a little bit better what those lines look like and what the impact of that hiring over those five or six years is. Here's the changes in the demographics over that time period. So you can see, because of that, that thrust of minority hiring, we're down ten and a half percent, ten and a half points in eight years in that timeline. Uh, the Latin American, Indian, Asian, those are really high, but those are really small numbers. The ones to pay attention to, I think, are the Hispanic, they did a hundred to eighty percent in those eight years, and the black, it's, it's thirty three percent. So the past three years, we've been, uh, so here's, and this is not a mistake, I want you to see both years. Here's last year's, you're gonna notice that these remain a Here's last year's, you're going to notice that these remain essentially statistically the same, these remain the same. With that one third drop of this year's cohort, what does that mean to us this year? Pretty much the same, pretty much the same, it was two point three percent rise in the white. The past five years, that number has gone down, everyone the past five years, it slipped a little bit this year because of that, because of that change. Who leaves combined with who comes in. So we only have four hundred twenty one, we have four hundred eighteen this year, it's not a large number. So a few here aren't there, a little, if you take your foot off the gas a little bit, don't have those great results, it can have a big impact. So what we have been able to say to you the past three years, is that this curve, while they're not equal, they reflect each other. We more, our staff more reflects our student body than it has in the past because of these efforts. But as you look at it this way, here's where the gap's created, and really shows you, so in Hispanic and in the white, in smaller numbers, you know, but that, that kind of illustrates for you, we want to, we still want to maintain this goal, keep going the way we have been going and going towards which is, so we'll leave you back with my favorite slide, the final slide this evening. And the thought I'll leave with you is, we've had another great year in terms of finding, recruiting, hiring, retaining, highly qualified staff and a competitive market. However, like all competitive endeavors, that's last year. It means nothing this year, except you want to keep the strategies and structures that you have in place. And the final thought I want to leave you with, we've got to continue to innovate, we've got to continue to perform at high levels, and we have to keep our foot on the gas, and I want you to remember that this is what the road looks like in front of us. And that's why we've got to keep going, and thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Jordan. There's a lot of info, any questions for Doug?
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Buckley, policies for review, you got two in a row.
I do.
Now, I don't believe, unless you really, really want to go through these one by one, we all were made aware of these on the consent agenda item, and hopefully, we were all able to read over these, so instead of asking Ms. Buckley to go through a whole Doug's funny show, maybe I'll open it up to the board to ask if there's any questions or comments about specifically the policies for review, red four C.
I wonder, remember that we lay eyes on these every, what is it, four years?
Every policy, that's exactly how we do that, so nothing's changed here, they're just, good to remind yourself that the policies are.
Very good, important point to make. Okay, hearing no comments or concerns about these, we'll scoot forward to the future action items, minor policy revisions. Again, I'll open up to the board to bring their comments or questions. Ben, I know you emailed two small ones, do you want to talk about those, just the rest of the board knows, what you identified? I can bring up the email if you want me to.
And it's already been corrected.
It's already been corrected.
Should be reflected up here.
It was basically wording.
A title, his title wasn't correct.
That's right. But I did, I did have a second question for you, Jen. So some of these are generally for the board, I don't want to get them all straight, it was like, some of them are pretty substantial policies.
Yes.
Like the prohibition against harassment, retaliation. So here, these are minor, minor review revisions, right? I'm trying to think of the right way to ask this. What is your recommended position for the board for our familiarity with these in-depth policies, right? And, you know, why weren't there major revisions? I mean, it's sort of like, okay, I looked at this, and it's a three-page, extremely in-depth policy, and there's only minor revisions recommended. When would these come up for major revision slash, I mean, this is, they're very important in-depth provisions.
So our rule of thumb is, all of the directors own their specific area policy, which is like student services would own the J policies, and so on, so on. So then, but these are assigned to our people that own them, and then they determine based on, our rule of thumb is, if context is changing, it needs to be a major. If it's just a cross-reference, or mincemeat words, is what I like to say with these, we keep it minor. Now, to your point, I know that's a very long policy, so I don't think it's as much what is being revised as it is just in the depth of the policy. So I guess I'm.
Now, I would say it is the responsibility of the board, just like with the review, you need to read, same thing with the minor, so it is a minor, nothing's really changing, but it's a big policy, and it's an opportunity for the board to just say, oh wow, I got to read this policy and know it. Remember, we have a service, the VSBA provides us the guidance by which we make any changes. So in this case, the VSBA has said, there's a small little revision we're going to make to this policy, nothing major, everything else stays the same. And, but then others that are more major, with a lot of red lines through it, then we would make them a major for discussion.
And I think, no, I think it's fair, it's important, remember, like, if you have a, there's one that you're like, I have problems with this, right? We pull it from this, and we have a discussion, it's an activity, like, it's a discussion item. We've done that before, like, dress code comes to mind a couple years ago, which is, I don't want to speak attitude differences, but.
I understand, that was one where we, like, sat around and worked on the thing as a board, very meeting.
And I wanted to add, one thing that frequently has come up for me over the past couple of years, is that in the past, we have put somebody's name and their title in policy. Well, I don't think that's good practice, because one, those names, we, you know, we get turnover, and then also, people shift, like, as if the title nine coordinator, you know, we moved that around down here a lot, so you'll see some of the changes in these minors weren't just what the VSBA recommended, but what we also changed, just as a result of looking over and realizing some of the information was outdated.
Old email addresses.
Old email addresses that nobody uses, yes. That must have been, I don't know how long ago, but I checked with other directors, those emails are no longer utilized, we shouldn't have it in policy for people to send emails to those addresses in the event of a report, so those have also been updated.
Jen, so the items that come under minor policy revisions, do those policies not also come up under policies for review? They don't?
Well, they do eventually, on a four-year cycle. But like, if we, because it's a minor, it would go under review, since it has been revised, it would go under review cycle.
Right, okay. We consider it reviewed. If it's undermined, if it's under minor, we consider it reviewed, and we don't, so it's now four years from now, we hope I can see that, yeah, unless there's more revisions for this thing.
Hearing, I was just trying to say, that policy's been more revised in the last four years than the last four years. Right.
And maybe it's beating a dead horse, but again, when those policies for review, when that four C comes up on an agenda item, please, if you have a problem with a policy, that sounds too negative, you don't have a problem with it, but if you want to talk about a policy, please let Mike or I know, so that we can, we can ask to move that into a good discussion point.
And I'll just mention this, J O B, the consent form, we've always had the policy, but we didn't have the consent form, so we're just a minor, because there's no change to the policy, but we needed a form, so little things like that.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, any other questions or comments? Great, thank you so much, Ms. Buckley. Okay, this brings us to the need for closed session, Mr. Burchnow?
Pursuant to section two point two down thirty seven one one ablement in Pennsylvania, motion that the board convene in closed session with the purpose of discussing personnel matters, specifically, deeper attempts at assessment, coaching segments, administrative segments, musical segments, associate teachers and support staff, candidates, transfers, and resignation.
Okay, motion by Mr. Burchnow.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Island, any discussion? Hearing none, all those with favors say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in closed session.